Good evening all. Thank you for attending tonight's town council meeting on Zoom. I would like to note the Shropshire Council's local plan review consultation ends at the end of this month. So if anyone hasn't given their response to Shropshire Council yet, you need to and soon. I was incredibly pleased to see the leisure centre in Much Wenlock opening again. The huge effort to make it safe by the team is well received in the town. And it's great to see so many people being able to swim and exercise in there once more. It's also a similar case elsewhere as due to one volunteer's efforts, the bowling green is reopened to the public. And I wish everyone planning to play to do so safely, but to really enjoy what is left of this season's games. Outside of sport, but continue on our theme of reopening. I was pleased to see an important building like the Priory Hall, central to civic life in Much Wenlock, be open again this week. It's nice to have these things open and available to our public. Please remember that COVID-19 is still with us, so enjoy them safely. The Goat Hall has also been open for a month now, the very successful art exhibition by Maggie Humphries. And from tomorrow, we'll have Interface Tapestry Touring International, who have an exhibition and some sale items in there, which should be worth checking out. Finally, I'd like to mark something closing. The Copper Kettle has been an important part of Much Wenlock life over 20 years, but now it's closed its doors. It's been 12 years since I did some work experience there. And of course, I went to school with their daughters, such as the niceties of growing up in a place like Much Wenlock. And of course, Lesley does some great work in chairing the Christmas Fair Committee. On behalf of the town council and the people of Much Wenlock, I would like to thank them for their hard work over the years. And I would like to wish Clive and Lesley a very happy retirement and to enjoy a well-earned rest. Thank you. Item two, do we have any apologies?
Yes, councillor Harper, who is unwell.
I propose that we accept these apologies as approved absence. Thank you, Mary. All those in favour? Excellent. Item three, disclosure of any pecuniary interests. If anyone has an interest, can they declare it now? Yes, Natalie?
I just want to check, we are just noting item nine, not discussing it?
Correct. It's just a verbal report.
Would you say that again?
I should be okay to stay.
As it's only item nine's only been noted, could she, could she able to stay in or?
This is about the grant.
Ingrigoration, yeah, the grant.
The grant funding. Well, it's a personal decision, but if you don't think there's anything there that is going to impact on you directly, or that, you know, you're going to have a financial benefit from. I don't see why. Is it just a report to note? There's no, is there?
Yeah, we're just noting it.
So that should be fine then.
Well, if it goes along and you feel that you need to say, you know, that you need to declare an interest, you need to leave, then just let us know at the time, really.
Yeah, if it goes any further, I will literally note and then I will leave.
Okay.
Excellent. Thank you councillor Park. Any, if there's no more, then we'll move on to dispensations. If we have any dispensations? No. And then item five, Shropshire Council reports. Over to you, Shropshire councillor David Turner.
Thank you everyone and good evening. Local plan review, I think I'm going to repeat councillor Thomas in this, but the public consultation is open until the 30th of September and can be viewed online. I understand that a copy is also available at the library, although members of the public may have to book a slot to view it. And I'd urge everyone to respond to the proposals now. Once again, a bit of repetition, Much Wenlock Leisure Centre opened on the 24th of August with stringent guidelines in place to ensure users' safety, very welcome. And finally, my advice surgery, the next one is, was scheduled for another parish on the 3rd of October, but their village hall has not yet been reopened. I intend to hold it at Much Wenlock Museum. If a town councillor would care to join me in the police, please let me know.
Thank you, David. If a town councillor would like to approach David Turner to support him, that'd be fantastic. Do you have any questions for councillor Turner? No. Okay then, then we'll move on to item six, public session. Town clerk, have we had any requests to speak?
No, no requests received.
Okay, and then moving on to item seven A, to approve the minutes of a town council meeting held on the 2nd of July. Anybody happy with page 1020 or 1120, 1220, 1320 and 1420? If anyone's happy with those, I propose that we accept those minutes as a true accurate reflection of the meeting. Thank you, Yvonne, councillors, all those in favour? Thank you. Item seven B, to approve and adopt the minutes of an extraordinary town council meeting held on the 20th of August. Do we have anything that needs changing on these draft minutes? Town clerk, yes?
There are a couple of minor typos. Page 1520, towards the bottom of the chairman's welcome. For clarity, I'd like to add in, respond to the Shropshire Council local plan consultation. And then I refer on minute six, I refer to Mrs Lesley Durbin as Mrs Durbin at one point and Ms Durbin at another. I don't know if she has a preference, but I will make it, make them the same, so it will be Mrs Lesley Durbin. And then also page 1720, right at the bottom, there is a reference to a statement made by Mr Ashcroft, referenced in seven A 111 above, and that should read seven B 111 above. They're just typos that I have.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Councillor White? You on mute councillor White?
Just to reiterate, following my email, there are a couple of points in the minutes which I don't agree with. And I just want to register that fact at this point, so I don't think they're accurate. I don't think they truly reflect the mood in the room or on Zoom and also the actual events. Thank you.
But for the sake of anyone in mind who's seen the email, can you just draw attention to those, please councillor White?
Yeah, sure. During the meeting, I was told that I was factually incorrect by councillor Harper, which I disagreed with. I was not allowed to have an opinion. I was twice told that I was incorrect. I've still stated that I'm entitled to my opinion. And the fact that I don't agree with councillor Harper doesn't mean that I'm not entitled to my opinion. That's the first point. And the second point was that I asked for a recorded vote. It wasn't just the fact that I asked for it, it was the fact that there seemed to be moves to try and block it for some strange reason. It was then discussed by all the councillors and then agreed to carry on with a recorded vote. That is not reflected in the minutes.
Okay. Councillors, do you have any thoughts on that, or would we like to have proposed them to be changed? Or would we like to propose that they are a true and accurate record? Councillor?
Can I just ask the town clerk?
Yeah.
And obviously, this is the first for me. And there's quite a lot of minutes in here compared to normal. Is it not that I'm disagreeing with councillor White? I just want to know how detailed do we have to be?
Strictly speaking, the minutes only have to record decisions. So what I've tried to do is actually to reflect the contributions of obviously members of the public who spoke and of councillors, because I'm aware that this is an important issue and is very contentious. So in typing up the minutes, clearly the minutes are not a verbatim record of everything that happens at the meeting. They're not intended to be. They're intended to capture the main points of discussion and obviously any decisions that were taken. But I could have probably put those minutes onto one, most two pages if I'd chosen, and that would not have been wrong. So there is no intention to record everything that was said in the detail, obviously that it was said. That's not the purpose of the minutes. It's not what I've done.
Thank you, town clerk. Councillor Jenkins, you had your hand raised?
It was simply to agree really with councillor White. We are a non-politically orientated council. And I think because there are often one or two of us who sometimes disagree with little items that are mentioned. I think on this occasion, it would, it would be good if we could accept councillor White's suggestion that on this occasion, it could be recorded that he didn't agree with the majority. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but with that, it's obviously got his, the recorded vote took place and his name is down as voting against it. I think in regards to that, and also in the minutes, it does mention that councillor White expressed this concern that members of the public who did not want a large development in the town, I expressed this concern there was no consultation. And then it kind of, it seems to me that, as someone who wasn't there, it seems to me that it pinges on whether the, because we've seen from Eddie West and Shropshire Council that that consultation, for want of a better word, was what they called a consultation. And I think in councillor White's opinion, and this is minuted, it stated that he had information and in his opinion, that wasn't a proper consultation. Now personally, you, that's, there's probably some weight to that. So as that's in the minutes and says his opinion, and I think that's fairly clear. Councillor White, unless you've got anything else to add?
I just think that saying that I asked for a recorded vote simply isn't accurate enough. Because it doesn't state, and if we're going to say that minutes record discussions, then why doesn't it say that there was then followed a discussion as to whether it was, should be allowed or not? Because that's the case, that's what happened.
Okay, okay. Well, it's got, a recorded vote was requested. I mean, we spoke about this already now. I'm looking for a proposal. We have a recording which I believe shows this and we may be releasing it. So with regards to that, this is just the minutes, these are just the decisions. Could I have a proposal, please? Councillor Jenkins, do you?
Well, yes, I'd like to propose then, having you having explained now and councillor White having had his say. I think we have, well, I understand now that this is, it's a point been raised, hopefully a point been accepted and understood by us. And let that be the end of it, or let that be the end of this particular discussion.
Okay, thank you. Mary Elliot, sorry, councillor Elliot, your hand up?
Yes, I'm happy to propose the minutes as they are.
Okay, so we've got a proposal on the table councillor White, last thing for me, please?
Yeah, just wanted to say, yeah, I'm quite happy for it to be the end of it.
Okay, thank you. We have a proposal on the table, could I have a second, please? Councillor Park, thank you. And all those in favour? Motion carried with one against. Thank you. So item seven C, to approve the minutes to the planning and environmental committee.
I abstained on the last one because I wasn't at the meeting.
Ah, thank you. Okay, yeah, perhaps I should have done as well, but I've already taken it. Thank you. So for point of record, councillor Holly Oak actually abstained and councillor White was against. Yes, town clerk?
I wouldn't record that unless anybody wants that recording. It was just, it was just passed on a majority. I mean.
Okay, yeah, that's what I meant. Thank you. Thank you for that. Sorry, back to item C, to adopt the minutes of the planning environmental committee held on the 2nd of June. Anybody have anything to suggest any changing on agenda item C, the planning meeting on the 2nd of June? Yes, town clerk?
You're not debating the accuracy of the minutes. That's already been agreed by the planning committee. You're just adopting them as a record for the town council.
Thank you. I propose that we adopt these minutes as a true and accurate reflection. Thank you councillor Holly Oak. All those in favour? Excellent, thank you. And item D, to adopt the minutes of the planning and environmental committee held on the 30th of June 2020. Item 7D, does anyone have any objections? Are we happy to adopt these minutes?
Yeah.
Councillor Holly Oak, others in favour? Thank you. Moving on to item eight, town clerk's report. Town clerk?
Yes, well, the report is as written. The only update I have, I think, is that I have been in contact with the new owners of Shadow Quarry, which is Avon Estate, and one of the directors has agreed to come to the October full council meeting to give you an update on their plans and progress with developing the site.
Excellent. I think having their representatives to our town council meeting next month is a brilliant move. And I thank you, town clerk, for arranging that. And we look forward to hearing what they have to say. Does anybody have any other questions for the town clerk?
Yeah.
In that case, as I said, we note that report and thank you for it. Item nine, reinvigoration of Much Wenlock town centre. Councillor Fimmings, could you give us a quick report on the funding and where we're at, if that's okay? Sorry, just, I think you've just taken your video off instead of unmuting yourself. So you're still on mute there councillor Fimmings, sorry, they put you on the spot.
Yeah. Sorry about that, yes. Just to recap, though, we were very pleased that the application for £5,000 fund was accepted. And we, our three-strand plan of signage improved and sort of rejuvenated signage for the town, perhaps getting a little bit more of a message of why people should come and spend time in Much Wenlock. Secondly, it was a promotional video which will be really aimed at being in short, sharp, rather than a long video, it'll be in short ones that are more suitable to social media feeds. And this will then be rolled out over a period of time. And lastly, in order to make sure that we're getting the full benefit of this, it's good to plan to have some coaching for traders, not just traders, but also any other groupings like sports clubs, culture groups and civic society, and these sort of people who may be able to improve the offer to the public and try and get more people into the town. So it's, I'm not going to be delivered by good to great at this stage, who have been doing programmes for Wellington, Bridge North and recently Dawley. So they've got quite a local track record.
Excellent. Does anyone have any questions for councillor Fimmings or some of the councillors, like councillor White, myself on the group in regards to the funding and what we're doing with it? Yes, councillor Jenkins?
I wonder, are we in touch with coach companies, tour companies now? And if we have been in the past, I wonder if it might be politic to, so we get coach loads of old people with lots of money to spend coming to visit us?
We, not yet.
Part of the plan particularly, but it is something that could actually be highlighted as an opportunity for shopkeepers who could actually get in touch with good companies themselves and tell them about what's happening in Much Wenlock. And actually, and also to perhaps target those coach companies with the videos that we're going to be promoting. It's not a difficult thing to do and everybody can do that.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's obviously something we should actually, could approach them to and just make them aware of the content that we're creating with the videos and everything. So I think that's a good point. I'll just make a note of that. It could be something the committee take on board. But if not, I think we're happy to move on and note that and we'll move on to the next item if everyone's happy. I propose that we note the report. Someone to second the proposal. Thank you councillor Jenkins. All those in favour? Excellent, noted. Item 10, planning application. This is through the reference 1900560. To note that the amendments to the above application have been submitted. I consider the recommendation of the planning and environment committee regards to the town council's response. Councillor Hill is chair of the planning committee. Could you, would you like to give us some background and then let us know the planning environmental committee's recommendation, please?
From the beginning, I'll tell you, we make no recommendation because we struggled to find out exactly what the amendments are. We have asked Shropshire Council, the town clerk has emailed Shropshire Council to ask what the amendments are, to no avail. And we also, councillor Walter also made contact with Telford and Reekin, had an interesting conversation with a lady, with the net result, we still have no idea what the amendments are. And the documents that we were looking at extended to many hundreds of pages. And we felt, I know councillor Walter spent a great deal of time looking through, trying to find what the amendments are. And so we felt without guidance, without any physical pointing in the direction of what the amendments are, we couldn't come to a conclusion. It's a very lengthy document. And time was just, we just did not have the time to find out. I don't know why it was so difficult for Shropshire Council, Telford and Reekin not to simply tell us what the amendments were. All we would like to say is that we support the initial recommendations that we made when it was the, without the amendments, those still stand. I think the amendments were to do with the, possibly to do with the road, the entrances. But I've said, I'm very sorry, but we really could not come to a conclusion without actually having the amendments in front of us. So very sorry about that, but we'll, we'll go on trying to find out what they are. But as yet, we've had no information from Shropshire Council or Telford and Reekin.
Okay. So with regards to that, does anybody have any comments and things obviously on BuildWus? Because we made our comments known before with regards to an objection, as I, if I remember correctly.
Yes, we did it. We did a number of objections, very strong objections.
So I mean, if we don't know what the amendments are, I noticed on, when I looked online and looked at it, I wasn't exactly sure what was different. I'm quite busy at the moment, but I'm pretty sure I did look thoroughly. Obviously, we've got to note this, but I think unless we reiterate what we said in the past again.
I mean, I'm quite happy that we should emphasise that our initial submissions, we still firmly stand by those.
Absolutely. And particularly with, when we looked at education, we looked at flooding, we looked at obviously the road and the Gaskell junction and the massive impact it can have on that. Particularly with obviously not just HGVs and other things as well. I think it's certainly some merit in perhaps resubmitting and continuing our response if, if we're happy with that. Councillor Jenkins?
Yes, I agree. Let's resubmit because otherwise if we, if we don't say anything, it might be glossed over. So by resubmitting and querying this nonsense, then we're, we're showing that we're on the, on the case.
Excellent. Do we have a proposal then to just resubmit our comments? Town clerk, because we've put to note it, can we still, can we still have a proposal that we just resubmit our comments? I just wanted to make sure. Sorry, you're on mute Trudy.
Sorry, the agenda item says to consider the recommendations of the planning and environment committee. So yes, I mean, the intention was that you would.
I just want, yeah, I just wanted to make sure because it mentioned to note, but just probably overthinking it. In that regard, could I get a proposal that we, please? Councillor Jenkins?
Yes, I propose that we do as I suggested and resubmit, please.
Okay, resubmit objections based on what they were. Councillor Whitman seconded it?
Seconded that.
All those in favour? Excellent. Motion carried. Item 11, draft local plan consultation. 11A is to consider the proposals for the employment land of Much Wenlock. So obviously, we talked about the housing and now we're just talking about the pure employment land. And councillor Hill, would you like to give us some background on the employment land?
The amount that is available is much reduced now. I, to be quite honest, we haven't had a discussion about the employment land that is in the draft local plan at all. We just have not had time to look at the proposals for the employment land. I'm afraid it's not figured terribly high because we just haven't got much employment land. What we had got has been much reduced and we have been waiting for Shropshire Council to find us extra employment land, which I don't think is more forthcoming.
I mean, so in that regard, I think we could actually, writing our response to proposals to reiterate asking for more, if that's the feeling.
We'll, we can certainly write to them and clarify what is available and what was originally and what we have lost. And, you know, ask them to make that up.
Yeah, because there were, I'm sure there was more originally that's in here now. And in that regard, I think it's important for us to actually try and see, because obviously in the five-year strategy that we can have more. And we want Much Wenlock not only to be a great place to live, but also a great place to work for the people who are lucky enough to be able to live and work here. But for the people who commute to here in places like Grange Ventsing, we want to, as I understand, the town council would like to support that. Does anybody else have any comments or questions they'd like to add on the employment land or any comments at all? Okay, in that regard, I think it would be worth that we note that what we've, the employment land that we've got. But also I think, I'm not speaking out of turn, if I propose that we could actually ask Shropshire Council for more than what's in this plan. If anybody's happy with that, would anyone would like to second my proposal?
I'll second it.
Excellent. Thanks councillor White. All those in favour? Motion carried. Thank you. And then item B, to consider the impact of Much Wenlock on proposals of other areas included the local plan. So this was originally on the, I think on the agenda for last months, but due to the time, it never got mentioned. I think it's important that we really do consider this in regards to places like the Tasli Development. It's obviously not in our area, but at the same time, if we could, we should consider it because it puts a lot of houses on, you could argue, and I would argue, the wrong side of Bridge North for us. If they, I probably imagine if they work in Telford, they probably still go through Bridge North, past the Rook Club and, or other ways rather than coming through Wenlock. But if they are going Sheeshby Way or anything like that, that obviously could add more and more stress to places like the Gaskell Corner. And similarly, it's obviously BuildWus, which we actually have spoken about that already. But that's only three miles away and that's obviously. But that's only three miles away and that's obviously included in the local plan. So I think we really need to discuss this now and think about what we can actually consider and what we would like to do potentially, if anything, about the impact. Councillor Hill?
Just as a personal point of view, and it is not the view of the planning committee because we haven't had a conversation about it. But in my point, from my point of view, I can't see that development at Tasly will affect us very much at all. So I mean, the main problem will be commuting to work. You mentioned people working in Shrewsbury. I think if you're working in Shrewsbury and you're going to buy a new house, you probably go for one of the many, a choice of many estates, new estates around in Shrewsbury. I can only imagine that if you work in Shrewsbury, you're living in Tasly's because you've got links to Tasly and I can't imagine that is a huge number of people. The majority of people, I guess, from my past knowledge and employment, a lot of people commute from Bridge North to the Black Country. I think that's where most of the employment goes to. And you would not touch much Wenlock in that respect. You would go along the Bridge North Road or the Stourbridge Road. Either depending which end of the Black Country you're working. So I really can't see, as you pointed out, Telford is a big draw for employment, but you're not going to come up to Wenlock. You'll go down, as you rightly said, on the 442 and pick up the expressway to all branches of Telford. If you want to do shopping, what does much Wenlock have that Red Bridge North doesn't? I mean, I can't see that the Tasly development will increase the traffic in Wenlock very much at all. I really can't. But I'm open to people disagreeing with me. That is a purely personal point of view.
No, that's fair enough. It's a valid one. Councillor Whitman, your views, please?
Yeah, well, I don't necessarily agree with councillor Hill actually on this. I think it will have some impact. Mainly not as much as it might do. But I think that it's this side of Bridge North, you see, so I think on Wenlock and this side of things. I don't know where people go to work. It varies, I suppose. I would have thought the best scheme for Bridge North was the Stanmore site, but apparently that's not been ruled out or something. I gather that would have been far better from our point of view, if it was the other side of Bridge North and not our side of Bridge North, because it's only about six miles to Tasly, isn't it? It's not far. It's that. And so I think it will have some effect on Wenlock. Perhaps not a huge amount.
Yeah, I mean, it's quite interesting that the Bridge North Town Council actually preferred Stanmore, but Stanmore was the one that was actually dropped for the local plan review. So it was quite interesting in that regard, if you follow Bridge North politics. But councillor Fumins, your views?
Yeah, I don't agree with Mary as well. I think, I think it's, you're going to remember that houses nowadays, they will generally have two commuters leaving that house every morning now. And to imagine that all going to be going in the same direction is, it is wrong. There will be a significant number coming to Shrewsbury. Indeed, you know, if West Midlands is such a draw, remember there is have quite a large development going to happen at Cressage. We've also got Cross Houses and there are 900 houses going up at Sutton Farm in Shrewsbury. And, you know, they're going to come through much Wenlock as well. If, if you're going to go to the Black Country, then that's going to be a draw from Bildwass as well. I mean, you know, so they're not going to go, necessarily go down the motorway. It depends which end of the, end of the Black Country. You're probably more likely to go through Stourbridge if you're going to go to the southern part of the Black Country. So I think that we do need to, we do need to predict a significant increase of traffic to the town. I think if we, if we don't, if we don't accept that is going to happen, then I think we're going to be negligent in our forecast for the, for the town. It's, it's just, it is just going to be far worse than it is now. And we do need to be putting a marker down of what we expect out of this, you know, that we do not expect all this development to be at the detriment of quality of life in much Wenlock.
Excellent. Thank you councillor Fumins. Does anyone else like to have anything to add? They may agree with councillor Hill or Fumins and Whitman or, but anyone else have anything to add on this? Councillor Jenkins?
I'll be brief with my snob's hat on. I don't think we need to dumb down much Wenlock with vast numbers of houses. It's a bit of a waiting game. I do agree pretty much with councillor Hill's suggestions about the Tasly development. And I don't, it's personal opinion, I don't see why places like Wenlock and even Cressage need to have huge amounts of extra housing forced on us when we are so close to conurbations like Telford and Shrewsbury. But we are then bucking, my ideas are bucking the government's plans for the country. But I think we ought to just wait and see, particularly with Ironbridge. The implications there we all know about. So I've said my piece, I'm in.
So with regards to, obviously, we're looking at the other areas. I mean, Cressage has obviously got some, and so is Tasly and then Sheeshby and Bildwass. What was your view specifically on that councillor Jenkins? I think I lost you slightly.
Yeah, sorry. What I'm, I'm saying is that places like Cressage and Cross Houses and much Wenlock in particular, I think we should stick to our guns and try and to limit the amount of extra housing. And particularly going back to what we've been discussing, discussing about employment land, of which we have very little. I wouldn't mind betting that there are, there are certain places like the spa and the garage that employ local people. I don't know about others up on the Wenlock Edge Road. I don't know, Grange Fencing, I don't know if they employ local people. But I think there's, there's a, there probably are people travelling into Wenlock to work. But the majority of those who work will be travelling out of Wenlock. And I, I think we should, we should try and limit our desires to be bigger and object to the Shropshire Institute Authority's desires to make us so big. But lastly, I would, I would refer to Chris Bowden's talk about the flooding issues. And I do agree unfortunately that unless, unless we have the developments proposed at Hunter's Gate, we're not going to solve those issues.
Okay, so we're just talking specifically about the other areas and not about flooding and about much Wenlock right now. And we just wonder, just, I was just looking for your views on a response to to this, but I think I've got them. Does any other councillors have anything to say on this or we're looking for a proposal? Sorry. Walters then, councillor Natalie Park, what's first, please?
We are living in a town with a medieval road structure. It's my favourite hobby horse. The town cannot handle the traffic that goes through at the moment. Gaskell Corner is, to my view, overwhelmed. Go and stand there sort of nine o'clock one morning and try and cross the road. And whether it comes from Tasly, Bildwass or wherever, it's just going to be quite impossible. I'm thoroughly in favour of resurrecting that bypass that we talked about in the past. I mean, if we're going to maintain some sort of quality of life in the town, traffic is going to be a major issue, a really major issue. And we need, we do need to address that in some way. I think the phrase was used, putting a marker down. Well, a very solid marker that says, we can't handle much more development, given the topography of much Wenlock in any case. What we are forced to have is going to be overwhelming the current road network. And we need major attention paid to what we're going to do with the traffic that's going to be coming through much Wenlock from both of those directions. Thank you.
Okay, so, yeah, so you'd actually, so it's fair to say that you're slightly concerned about the fact that much Wenlocks potentially, you could argue, getting lots of.
Very, very concerned.
Concerned about the developments around, outside of much Wenlock itself, but the ones around it affecting it. Councillor Natalie Park?
So I was just looking at Google Maps. And just from Tasly, I haven't got an exact location, but Tasly as itself, and it's actually quicker to get to my house in Brozley via much Wenlock.
Is it? Yeah.
Which would mean more traffic coming through on the 458 coming into town. Okay, they might not come all the way down to the Gaskell Corner. But then they might, you know, you know, someone coming through for a pit stop, but it is actually quicker to come on the 458 to get to Brozley than it is to go through Assy Abbots and.
Yeah, no, I think that's, that's important then because they, even if they didn't come to the Gaskell Corner with such, it could still allow traffic in Wenlock. Councillor O'Kee?
No, me?
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Yes, I think I agree with what people are saying about the traffic. But at the end of the day, this is the job of Shropshire Council. We cannot do, actually alleviate the traffic. We can't control it. We have to rely on Shropshire Council. And I think we just have to keep lobbying them all the time, chairman. I did ask at planning and I hope, I think the town clerk is inviting some to the next officers to the next meeting. But I think that's our job, to keep lobbying every meeting right to Shropshire Council and give them our fears and our views and tell them what we think. But just keep there because we can't do it in our own right. We are a town council and we haven't got that power.
No, I completely agree. So with councillor Holly O'Conne, on item 11B, on the impact on much Wenlock of other proposal areas, what would you suggest that we lobby Shropshire Council on specifically in that?
Yes. We just keep lobbying every meeting, chairman. Just, you know, it gets through eventually. But unless we're at the top of the pile, we're not going to get anywhere. And perhaps a delegation with you one day, you know, when you have a holiday. And I think personal representation, anything, but get to Shropshire Council to get them to do something. At the moment, they're sitting back and, you know, not, I mean, you've had little meetings in the town, but you want a big one. You want them to get the whole issue and could you please have plans of what they intend to do?
Yeah, that's, that's great. Councillor Fumins, over to you, please.
Yeah, well, we want a resolution on this, don't we? And my resolution is that this council is deeply concerned at the potential impact on, of worsening the traffic in, as councillor, as Alan pointed out, on a small medieval town of vast housing developments and the commuting and service traffic. You've got to remember there will be service traffic to all of these places. And I propose that we have a resolution to say to, to strongly put our concerns forward and that Shropshire Council will take very serious regard to the traffic in much Wenlock and will talk to us and consult with us properly on it.
Okay.
Because quite honestly, we sit back and say it's not going to affect us. They'll take it as a green light to just walk all over us and that's, and that isn't, that isn't an exaggeration.
Yeah, no, I think that's, that's great. Could you sum that up into a proposal that's a bit more manageable and then we'll see?
Well, I propose that it is, we express our grave concerns on the increased traffic from the developments at Tasly, Bildwass, Shrewsbury, Etal on much Wenlock and that Shropshire Council take decisive steps to lessen that impact.
Yes, councillor O'Kee?
Could I add to that, chairman?
Of course.
Sorry, that we also add in councillor Turner, because he is our representative and we need him to there at the face. So if we could lobby the, at every available moment.
Yep, no, okay, I think that's absolutely, that's absolutely fine. Well, we can add that into the proposal. Do you have a second for the proposal that's on the table? Thank you. All those in favour? Motion carried. Thank you. Item 12A, to consider response to the following consultation and any more received. So we have received a consultation from the John Champion at West Mercier Police and Crime Commissioner. And he's asking the town council for a survey of our opinions on feedback of where improvements need to be made on their kind of wider service really, particularly within regards to rural campaigns. I think that it would be important for us to submit a response, as there's only one response from a town council. I would like to propose that we look at councillor White and perhaps councillor Jenkins as well to delegate that to us, people who have experienced obviously working in the police and being on this town council and things as well, and anyone else who would like to support that. But that would be kind of my proposal as a response to this, is we can only do one. And it's quite difficult to do it as a whole, 11 town councillors on Zoom. Anyone got any comments?
I would second that, chairman.
Thank you. All those in favour? Excellent. So councillor White and councillor Jenkins, if you could connect to get that done shortly, it does, runs until the 9th of October. So if you could make your arrangements for the town clerk to come in and, and do that, that'd be, that'd be excellent because we do need to resubmit. It's important that much Wenlock voice is heard. And with your experience of working in the police and been on the council, I think you two would make a good response, quite frankly.
We're not trying to beat people up anymore.
No, correct. Okay, item 12B, Shropshire Fine Rescue Draft Integrated Risk Management Plan 21 to 25. The closing date to the 30th of September. So here, we're being asked for our views again as a town council in regards to their risk, integrated risk management, which will change the way they're kind of working with risk and identifying risk, managing and reducing risk and measuring impact risk. And it's a short questionnaire, but they've drafted online. But I think it's important again, the much Wenlock voice, as much Wenlock Town Council on behalf of its residents and businesses makes a, makes a response. And again, with it being difficult for 11 councillors, if anybody would like to take a lead and make a response on that, perhaps councillor Jenkins or councillor White, they're doing the police one. But if anyone would like to make a response on that, I think that would be important.
Suffice it to say that I'm going to get in touch with councillor White and have a face to face.
Yeah, so in that regard.
It's a step in the right direction, sorry.
So, yeah, so you think you'd be, and for the Shropshire Fine Rescue, you'd be happy to, to respond to that?
We do both then?
Yes, exactly.
I guess, I guess if we can organise a meeting, it might as well get them both to look at the same time.
If you're willing, please do it.
Okay, so a proposal that you also do that consultation. Can I have a second there? All those in favour?
Motion carried.
Item 13 to, we, so item 13 is because we've had a letter from the Lord Lieutenant of Shropshire who is considering response from the Lord Lieutenant, who is Anna Turner. And she is asking for people and she wants nominations from town councillors and wider community members to actually make a response to to the, to make a letter of thanks to anyone who has done a good job or worked exceptionally hard, perhaps in volunteering or something else in regards during the COVID-19 pandemic. And I think as a town council that knows so many people in the community and and was part that knows so many people in the community and was part of so many great things that went on, and a lot of councillors, including myself, were part of Much Wenlock Mutual Aid, if there's people who in that. I'm not necessarily looking for people to nominate now because it's supposed to be confidential and be a surprise. But what I would like to urge you all to do is to really consider that. And anyone you can think of who, in this community, or quite frankly, in the wider Shropshire area, who has gone above and beyond to help people and to make a difference and has answered the call in regards to supporting people in the community or community things during COVID-19, I think having a letter from the Lord Lieutenant of Shropshire would be actually a very nice thing for those people to receive and would be an important recognition of that. So please do go away and think about who you could nominate or who you think has done a great job. Because I think, and it's also to the members of the public who are listening in as well, it doesn't, I just answer this, but, yes, town clerk, sorry.
I'm not sure that this is a general request to everybody out there to nominate everybody they can think of.
No, you're right. It's, sorry.
Specifically to the clerk, so.
Yes, you're right.
The lieutenant wants to be overwhelmed with hundreds and hundreds of people to write letters to because undoubtedly there are hundreds out there who have been helping out.
Apologies. If I could be trapped that last statement and say, please tell the town clerk or any councillors, if there's someone who you think should be mentioned, please do come through us, please do mention to us and we will, we will make sure that they get passed across from the town clerk. So don't respond yourselves. Please do let us know and we will, we will pass it on. And councillors, please do ever think yourself because I think it would be an important thing for people to receive. So, and I know from knowing Much Wenlock, people in Much Wenlock worked excellent. So worked really hard and were excellent in COVID-19. So I'd like to echo my thanks again. But so my thanks to the Lord Lieutenant is probably better. So yeah, thank you. I think we'll move on from that. But yeah, thanks.
The George and the Gaskell.
Well, I mean, you can absolutely, if you would like to do that, because it's confidential. Sorry, it's not going to surprise. We won't actually discuss that in detail now. But councillor Jenkins, if you'd like to make your views known and things to, that'd be great. And brilliant. So item 14A, self-information bulletin. I'm just going to note these last items, which we've received. We've received a self-notification bulletin and other information that was emailed. I think we're happy to note there's disruption council and central government information connected with coronavirus that we've been emailing has been, I think, really good. They've been really active. Shropshire Council press releases, we've got those, happy to note those. Rural bulletins, notification of domestic boost online training sessions, which we have from the High Sheriff, the community reassurance update for Shropshire Council and the ugly plan, see from the upper stage, which also you've had emailed to us as well. So I would just propose that we note that we've had these correspondence and they're received to all members.
Yeah.
Excellent. Second it, thank you. All those in favour? Excellent. And then item 15, agenda items for the next town council meeting. So members are invited to suggest items for inclusion on the agenda for the next meeting. Does anybody have any items that they'd like to discuss at our next meeting? Councillor Jenkins?
I would like to bring up once again the traffic problem and see if we as a council can agree to trial either one way along Shianton Street towards Barrow, or a trial of completely closing the road at the old Guildhall. So the High Street becomes one-way down and then only can, you can turn right towards the Raven. We've mentioned this before, but I think it's something we need to keep on top of, please.
Okay, so with regards to that, you'd like to propose a closure of Wilmore Street and have that discussed at the town council meeting in October?
Yes, please.
And then, yeah, we can include that. Anything else? So we, sorry, town clerk, do we need to actually ratify vote to include that in?
Sorry, what did you say?
So do I need to, do we need to have a vote to include that proposal of looking at the Wilmore Street in there?
This is really just an opportunity for councillors to flag up anything at this stage that they might like included. But obviously, the agenda won't be drafted for another three weeks. So if anything else comes to mind, then, you know, councillors should get in touch.
Absolutely. Yeah. Councillor Natalie Park?
Can we do 10 High Street again, please?
Yes, specifically in 10 High Street, sorry.
Just like, even just to have like an update from the cons team?
Yes, absolutely. Actually, we are going to have our updates back in. We haven't had them in every agenda going because with coronavirus, not much has happened. But I think in October, it would be worth having a report from the different working groups again. So we'll include that in as well as the cemetery and history and other working groups. And then if that's all, we'll move on to item 16 to note that the next meeting will be on the 8th of October 2020. I propose that we note that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favour? Brilliant. Thank you. Well, thank you all for attending tonight. It is the shortest meeting I've chaired so far. And thank you for, members of the public for attending as well. We really appreciate it. And yes, thank you all and I wish you all a good night.